Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board of October 22nd, 2024. My name is Marty Aitkenz. I'm the chairman. Board members, Mr. Hemm, Mr. Franco, Ms. Barry, Mr. O'Brien, the head of inspectional services, Mr. Collins behind me, Commissioner, and Mrs. Griffin is our clerk. Could you please put yourself on silent or vibrate not to interrupt the meeting? If you want to speak, please step outside. I have a few things here. One thing I just want to go over quick before, let's go to the new business. Where am I here? No.
It's Marlin.
Yeah, Pardington Street. Here we go. Yeah, no, it's 57 West. This is it. I just want to speak to them, and then I'll swear where everyone is. ZB A 2463, Robert Mary for variance and finding to construct two-unit dwellings in the rear of the Apostle Premises number 57A West Street. Just so the board members know, I got a letter here from planning, and they want a site plan review to the way how this is going to work down there with parking, moving in and out of cars, how many trees are going to come down, whatever they're going to do, because it is three units. I know the client says it isn't three units, it's two units being put in, but I think we should have it go to site plan review, go back to planning before it comes to us. So how do you people feel?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Mr. Harrington, we're going to send you back to planning board to get this figured out before you come to C E S. Grab a motion, please.
ZB A dash 2463, Robert Mary for variance, finding construct a two-unit dwelling in the rear apostle on the premise number 57A West Street, Quincy, Mass., and make a motion to send it back to planning for a site plan review.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Council Harrington, I just got this earlier tonight. Before I got here, I would have called you. I apologize.
I spoke to my client, and we were going to ask for a continuance to meet with the planning department.
Oh, okay.
We just got this letter today for the first time, too. The planning director is wrong, and I sent him a letter telling me he's wrong.
Okay.
That this project doesn't meet the definition of what's required for site plan review.
I know. It's the way it is.
It's crystal clear and plain as that.
Section two, you know, it says right in there, you know, limitations on one building per lot, then it goes into if you're going to have that in the city, you should have a three or more, it should be site plan review, and your argument is two, correct?
Site plan review is required for dwellings of three units or more, meaning one dwelling with three units in one dwelling.
Oh, I don't believe that.
We don't have that.
It could have a two-unit building connected to a one-unit building, it's still three units on that.
If they're connected, it's one unit.
Right, and that's what I would even like to see anyway.
These aren't connected, so they're not one unit.
And I would like to see that, and I'll tip my hat even now, just so you know. I don't like that plan at all, with a 1900 house that is nice, just done over, and then you're going to put these two brand-new sticks there. They're going to make it like two different centuries on the same street in one little corner lot, hidden out of nowhere. I say, why don't you just build yourself a nice may-and-me-in-the-quarter house down there, it would look beautiful down that nice little road. You've got a 20-foot you have to deal with, and it's going to be all paved all the way back. And you've got ledge back there. You've got a lot of stuff back there you're going to be dealing with. You've got even your drainage and all that stuff.
We know all that.
All right.
The property is surrounded by multifamily houses, so.
Oh, I know it is.
Not exactly the location for a luxury single-family home.
But it is because of the trees, because when you drive down there, you're secluded. You're almost, I mean, maybe in the winter you see it, but that's just my, that's the way I feel, just so you know. If anyone's going to testify tonight, could you please stand up and raise your hand, take an oath? Can't take an oath, you cannot speak.
Everybody, raise your hand, please. Do you swear that the testimony you'll give before the board tonight is truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
You say I do? Ma'am?
Yeah.
I didn't hear.
Yes, sorry.
There you go. Thank you.
Do you understand?
I know. Some people might. Let's go back to ZB A 244. 19 Agawam Road, we want a variance to create a small patio, accommodate the 10-by-16-foot shed on the premises, 19 Iowa Daniel Reggie Deaney. We've already taken testimony on this. We went down there, and I asked you to let me go back and take another look at that. The back fence that's near where his shed is, the whole bottom of it's all rotten, because the wood used to be, the dirt used to be higher when he built his patio. So he wanted to put the shed closer to there so it would have some patio space for a table. I went over there and I looked. That fence, eventually, is going to have to be replaced. Someone's going to have to replace it. It's rotten, but that's not their fence, it's the neighbor's fence. Looking in there, it probably sticks up over the fence that's there, probably three feet, just the top part of it. It's shaded, it's out of the way. I think it looks nice. I think the yard looks nice. It gives them a little room, and that's why I wanted a variance. I'll be voting yes, but you guys decide what you want to do. It's very nice, it's very well done, talking about a ton of money he put into that house. As you drove by it and saw it before, it's gorgeous. It's just a beautiful, beautiful home, so.
Much nicer than it was.
Oh, yeah. Plus, he put a ton of money in there.
I'm in favor as well.
I'll vote in favor.
My question is, are we asking him to move it off?
No, we're going to move it off. Now, if he moves it off back, now you've got to build a new patio, because it took so long to get here and get finished, that when he was starting to build it, they made him get a variance, because he was building a closer. So what happened, as he, they did the yard all over, and they put in their patios. I mean, it's a beautiful design patio, it goes back with the wall, it's pretty, it's just that's where it belongs, over in the corner. And it's not a menace to no one on that. No one amends behind him, beside him, and it just goes over the fence, probably, like I said, three feet max.
All right, I'll be voting in favor.
Got a motion, please.
ZB A dash 24 dash 4, Daniel Reggie, I need for a variance to erect a small patio, accommodate a 10-by-16-foot shed on the premises numbered 19 Agawam Road, Quincy, Mass., make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Further under whole business. Cody Chi for variance and finding to construct and attach third unit, existing two-family on premise number 59 Old Colony F. I was looking at the two pieces we did here. Now, I don't know if I got the wrong ones, but I don't see where we shrunk that. Maybe I'm not looking right.
I'd be happy to go through them.
Yeah, if you could.
Brian Donahue, I'm the chairman, members of the board, Brian Donahue, Donahue Architects here in Quincy. Last, in September, we presented this addition. I'm here with Cody Chi, who's the owner of the existing two-family. Last September, we presented this, and there was certainly discussion and comments from the board about the number of bedrooms as it related to the parking situation. So we went back, and we made some modifications to the project, and I can go over those with you now. So what we did, I think the site plan on the bottom shows that, in essence, although the building is two and a half stories, the footprint on the site is really not increasing much other than the space between the building and the existing garage. I'd like to remind you also that this is right next to the Gavin Foundation and the T in the back. So in terms of neighbor exposure, it's fairly limited to any other house on the street, and also is within walking distance to the T. So what we've done is simplified the addition. We've shrunk the footprint, and we've decreased it by 600 square feet in living area. We've taken, in the new unit, we've removed a bedroom, which was interfaced with the existing house. We've removed a bedroom and a den, and we've also brought the ridge height down two feet. So this basically shows our addition. We are extending the existing units slightly to give the dining space to those units. We removed the den on the main floor to a dining room, living room, and we have three bedrooms and one bath. So we also dropped this line two feet above. It was 33 feet, and it's now 31 feet above the finished grid. We dropped that building down a foot. We couldn't go much further, because otherwise, it's just not livable. We couldn't create livable space on the top level, which is the bedroom level.
All right, and now you've got two units. What's three units? What's the total bedrooms in each unit now?
It's three in the new unit, and it's.
Four on the second floor.
Four on the second floor.
And two on the first floor.
Two on the first floor, so I think it's nine now.
And how many parking spaces on site?
Well, the new construction entails a two-car garage, and then we've got two tandem spaces to along the property line. And there certainly is, in a snow emergency or something, there's certainly enough room if there was a couple of cars. How many cars are in the moment?
Unit one has one car. Unit two has two cars.
Okay, so three cars. Three cars currently, so.
No, two cars currently.
Two cars currently. So we believe, just because of the location and the proximity to the T, that this is adequate for these type of units. If a family rented this space, typically a couple, one kid, two kids, you need at least three bedrooms.
And how many spaces do you have? Are you saying four?
Two in the garage and two tandem. This, this.
I thought we had a fifth somewhere. I don't know why in my brain I should have thought we had a fifth somewhere.
If we did tandem parking, which a lot of residential projects do, people park tandemly in the garage, but we're trying to show this as realistic as possible, that you can fit four cars on there, but in essence, you probably think you'd get one or two more.
Could or can.
If they're tandem, so if one family took a spot, tandemly did it. So how do we divide the spots, just so we know? You're going to have three different units, and you have four spots. Who gets what?
I would have to defer to Cody on that.
You can't tandem the bottom.
Who would be assigned the spot?
Who would be assigned?
People aren't using the garage now.
Fuck, you know, but not the state.
So the people that live there now are just parking on the driveway. Correct.
But who are you going to assign? Who are you going to assign parking spaces? If I'm renting a space, I'm renting a room, or I'm renting my apartment, I want to know how many space I get. One? Do I get two?
Okay, so the first unit, it's a father and two daughters living there, they have one car.
That's today. Go ahead.
Correct. And, you know, they want to keep staying there, because they just started college.
All right.
And the father doesn't.
You've got one car down there. Go ahead.
So upstairs, I got three sisters and a roommate. They are from Kikot, and they only have one car this whole time. They've all lived there for at least two years, three years, actually. So the first.
But they could move out, and there's three bedrooms there, correct?
Sorry, four.
Four.
No, they're not moving out anytime soon, because I promised them I would.
But eventually, someone's, that's what we're trying to say. Someone's going to change. Someone's going to move, someone's going to do something. I get right beside the T, which I do get that, too.
I mean, I'm sure, because I used to live there myself. We, my father, everybody had a car.
See? Used to. You just said it, used to.
Chairman, everything changes, though, in the future, right? Okay?
Exactly.
I don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but seriously, though, we used to live there, and there was like six cars, and we managed it in tandem, all right?
Yeah, it was two units. There was only two units then.
Correct, but there was like eight people, eight of us living there.
I know, but there's two units, so you could say, here, that's your half the driveway, that's my half. Don't get on my side, and we'll figure it out. I get that. But now you've got a third unit in there, puts a little twist into it.
So right now, they're in tandem, correct?
Yep.
So these two cars, if they have two cars, okay, I don't know if they will or not.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe not, but these two cars, right, they're in the parking tandem, you know, in theory, if these two cars are here, and these guys actually work in downtown, hey, I'm not driving, this is to be my car here. I get that all the time. Previous tenants, like previous people that used to come in, I don't want a car, I have this.
I don't want to hear about previous tenants. I really want to hear how we're going to make this work. Who gets what? That's all I ask.
Okay, all right. So first unit, we get this one.
Okay.
Unit two, we get this.
Yep.
All right, and.
Third unit gets the two.
Well, you know, yes. Okay, unless they, I was thinking about solar in the future, maybe.
Yep.
So like, you know, if somebody has electric car, you know, hey, you can park in there, try to park, maybe that's something you'd want to do. Because they mentioned it to me before, third unit wanted by a Tesla. It was like, you know, can I install a, you know, rechargeable?
Yeah, right beside your space, right front of the driveway.
Well, like, yes. So if they park this way, right, one and two, same thing, unit one get this one, get this two, and they go up this way.
Could you just run us through the bedroom count per unit again, quickly?
Nine.
Nine.
How many per unit?
Two on the first floor.
Two.
So first, unit one has two bedrooms.
Yep.
Unit two has four bedrooms, and the new one we're proposing has three bedrooms.
I get it. You're right next to the T, and I get all that. I really do. I get that. I get why people are using cost, they, a lot of them cost so much money, and I get it, especially people starting out, but. Any questions?
I don't know, still nine bedrooms and four parking spots.
It's right next to the T. If they had a fifth one, I think it'd be great. If we could line that up somehow, maybe the one up front in the corner, they could make one in front, I don't know, in front of the house, and they could go around it. They've got two cars there.
You mean, put a space like where this is?
Yeah.
Yeah. I can do that. So there's grass right here. I can take this pile up, make that a parking space?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely, I can do that.
I'd rather have bathrooms. And if it's not used, it's not used, but at least, and you get a turn-in and whatever you need at that time, whatever they can do.
I'll do that.
When I come up.
I'd like to be more than, the regs require eight, I'd like to be at least five.
That's what I'm saying. He's going to put one more in there for us, and I would like to see that, too. The fifth one makes a huge difference, you know? Someone rents a car for a weekend or whatever.
That way, you're under the regs by three, not four.
Yeah.
You're over 50%.
Well, it's next to the T, too.
Yeah, it's next to the T, so they can.
I mean, still, the other stuff that we've done in that area, you know what I mean?
Yeah, Beale Street, we did one per.
Yeah, and then one of the side streets, they're one of the ones down there that floods. Plus, that's going to be already developed.
I know. Yep.
You know, there was a massive plan for.
Somewhere.
Someday.
Somewhere.
And they're going to remove that.
This is in the Wallaston overlay, this, which is going to be less than one per unit.
Right, right. That means, yeah, it's one and a quarter now. It'll be one, a little less than one.
And I mean, how valuable is it to land in there, because next to Coffee Break, they tore that three-decker down, and we fought with for years, and that's only back.
All right, so why don't we put the fifth spot in there?
Yeah.
All right? We got, put a fifth spot in there.
Okay. We can do that.
Any other questions? Any other things? Anyone? Franco, anything?
Just, so taking out green space to put in the fifth parking. No, my question is, do they then need a variance for the green space problem?
No, we're also.
We're just going to.
Get away from him.
Got you. Thinking out loud.
All right. Thanks. You guys can have a seat.
Thank you.
Is there anyone, anyone here want to speak in favor of the new set of plans? Anyone speak in favor? Second call. Third call, all of our hearing closed. No new correspondence, next up?
Additional correspondence from the planning department may support this project.
Yeah, there's a letter here from the planning board that waiver of the site plan review does not eliminate requirements, stay in all necessary permits and everything else. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call closed? I'll be voting in favor.
He asked for a vote.
You stay on?
I'm in favor reluctantly.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'm okay. Five. It was five. Final five.
If we can put that, the fifth spaces in there, under the conditions.
We'll add that to the.
Just add that in the conditions, we make it, so we can vote.
Want a motion?
Yeah.
ZB A 24 dash 24, Cody Chi for variance and finding construct attach a third unit to the existing two-family home on the premise number 59 Old Colony F, Quincy, Mass., and make a motion with the added, the addition of a fifth parking spot, to make a motion to approve.
Second.
On the motion, standing on, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further under tonight's agenda. ZB A 2464, Kelly Engineering Group for a special prime report plan, construct a 11,295 square foot two-story addition on the existing 79, Cardington Ave., YMCA.
I do like this.
None of them otherwise.
That's my office. You killed it. Mrs., that's for, so I can send the final decision sooner. Who would it? The final decision will allow.
Oh, okay, okay. That's the Old Colony. That's the last page.
God, this is.
Thank you. It's been a lot of times.
It was all one night. She was here for hail, and then one last, and it was, is a cutting.
Could you sign that, please? Pass it on, two pages, that was the Old Colony we just did.
You need to add a couple basketballs.
Sorry if you could sign that.
I went by the octo last weekend.
Trying.
I worked out with my daughter all summer.
It was only two blocks.
That's great.
As long as the big boys don't hang on the rim and bend them.
One second, we just got to sign these, maybe.
You're a good boy. Where am I?
Yeah.
I'm going to have to chase you down, Charlie.
Charlie. Come in your house, Charlie.
Go get him.
We only have, we only have one in there, though, not two. You always had two.
It's two.
It's two.
I only signed one.
Oh, my God.
Send it back to the slacker.
Give it back to the guy in the middle.
And my name spelled right.
Hey, see?
Didn't say Finkel.
No, last year, last year.
You've always seen it. You ever see it? It's like this.
You can't even read it?
No, worse.
Like a prescription.
Like a prescription pad. You have the floor, man.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I appreciate you having us here this evening. My name is Caitlin Safer, and I'm the executive director of the Hale Family YMCA right down the street. And as you can see, we are proposing a two-story, 10,000 square feet each floor addition to the Briggs Family Field House that's currently on the backside of our building. Just for orientation purposes, to the right side of the screen is Roxy's, and behind the Field House is McDonald's and the Car Wash, so the Cardington is on the left side of the screen. So with these, with the two-story addition we are proposing, as you can see on the plans in front of you, the first floor, we're proposing an additional group exercise studio. We see about 7,000 members in our group exercise studios every single month, so we can't feed that beast enough. We need some more space there. And as you know, we are great partners with the city of Quincy, the Quincy Public Schools, so we have about 400 teens that flood over from the high school every single afternoon that head into that Field House, so the group exercise space would also be an additional space for the teens to utilize after school as well. We're also proposing on that first floor to have some office spaces. During COVID, we had to downsize a lot of our office spaces, and so our Association Resources office is currently off-site, and so now just trying to get everyone back together for more communication and collaboration. And the second story would be a gymnastics center. Currently, the city of Quincy does not have a gymnastics center. I'm a former gymnast as well, so I really think that that would be a great addition to the city, and I'm here with my team today, so Brandon will take it from here.
It's plenty big. I saw all the people it could be, and it's pretty big, yes, nice.
Thank you.
My name is Brandon Lee from Kelly Engineering. As Caitlin mentioned, the property is located at 79 Cardington Street. To the north is Cardington Street. To the east is Southern Arty with McDonald's, Roxy's, Car Wash. To the south is McGrath Highway, and then to the west is Newport Ave. The site currently has the YMCA. It's approximately 118,000 square feet of gross whole area with 377 parking spaces. We're here before you for a special permit for the Floodplain District. The property is located within land subject to coastal storm flowage, which is due to tide lands from the ocean, which comes across the Quincy Bay. That has an elevation of 11. The current existing YMCA finished floor is set at 11 and a quarter above the coastal land subject to coastal storm flowage elevation. There's existing storm water management facilities on the site. To the southeast, where that north hour is, is a stormwater basin. There's also tide gates located throughout the property to manage that coastal storm flowage. There's multiple tide gates within the stormwater basin from pipes that enters from Roxy's and other budding properties, as well as within the existing sites, where other properties discharge stormwater onto the property. There's also a tide gate where stormwater from the sites exits onto Cardington Street. That tide gate is there such that when there's a coastal storm flowage and the high tides come up through Cardington Street, that tide gate will prevent the stormwater from flowing into the property. This site was constructed a little over 10 years ago, and it was previously designed for the Floodplain with those tide gates. The stormwater management system was fully designed to hold that 100-year storm volume within that basin. The zoning board of appeals has previously granted this special permit with the original construction. So we're proposing a 11,300 square foot footprint addition. That's two stories. We'll also be relocating the existing dumpster. The dumpster will be relocated.
Roxy's. I think it's John.
I can't see it, but it's over there. And then we are also just reconstructing the handicap ramp access, as well as the loading dock area. We're also providing an emergency fire access gravel lane. This proposed addition will result in a reduction of seven parking spaces. There's still 371 parking spaces, well above the zoning requirement. The existing, because the proposed addition is located within that existing stormwater basin, that volume will be mitigated with an additional drainage system located within the parking lot that blew square to the left, so that volume will be fully compensated. That will be taken. That will be taken up by the addition. And there's also a new drainage system for the addition of those Caltex chambers, subsurface recharge, as well as other stormwater management upgrades on the property. The existing water line will be rerouted around the addition. All the existing utilities on the property is sufficient for the proposed addition. Water sewer will all be tied into the existing systems. We've already applied for those intended with Conservation Commission, and we received an order of conditions that's ready to be recorded. We also applied site plan review, as well as special permit from the planning board, and they've issued a decision. The project has been reviewed by the city engineer, Department of Public Works. They've issued three comments, which we've addressed some of the comments already, and will provide the operation and maintenance plan this month to them. We've also received a letter from the fire department, basically stating that he visited the site and there's adequate access to the property. Butterfeld has reviewed the property, the project, as well as made comments, and that's all within the planning board decision. The planning board also submitted the stormwater to peer review for environmental partners, and those comments have all been addressed and incorporated into the plans. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I think it's a very pretty building. You're putting a nice piece on that. And I think it'd be a nice thing for the city.
Got the room.
The thing I want is, you have three things here that'll be read into the record. I don't know if you've done anything about it yet, is the maintenance record for the whole property should be submitted before the end of October 24. The maintenance plan and maintenance contract for the porch pavement should include the cleaning and maintenance, not just inspection. The applicant should provide plans and details for the de-watering process before any digging. So that'll be read into the record, but that's, you're talking about those three
Mm-hmm, yep. We've already provided the de-watering plan. We'll get the others.
Just for my own curiosity, the blue area on the front of the plant, that's the playground? If you look at the front page.
If you, maybe go to existing. Yep. Yep. So that playground is staying.
It's not a pool.
No.
It's not a pool.
It's not cool.
I think it's great that the city's going to have a gymnastic venue finally. The city's around Brinkley's, had it for 100 years, so. I think it's great. Nice addition.
Comments? Sorry?
I think it's a great value add for the community.
I have a couple of questions. The tackle gates, who controls them?
I think there's
DPW knows.
Yeah, city.
Do you know, do we know when they're, are they current?
DPW, get this care, some of them are overplayed, some of them random.
I mean, I'm thinking when they, when they installed, when they put the track in. When they put the track in across the street.
Oh, wow.
I'm sorry, what?
Were the gates installed when they put the track in, the new track?
That was a separate system, a separate
A separate, yeah.
Right, that's actually a mosh.
It goes under that mosh in the road in the back.
Yeah, no, I just wasn't sure that they were somehow interconnected. Okay.
There were two pipes down there that used to flow back. We had to fix all that. I used to, I blocked that thing 100 times when they were building it.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
You can have a seat. Does anyone here want to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Hall of power hearing closed. We'll read this in, it'll be written in, letter from the DPW. Those are the questions that we had.
To Martin Aiken, Chairman, Zoning Board of Appeals, from Changtai Civil Engineer, October 9, 2024, 79 Cardington Street, case number ZBA-24-64. We do read the submittal of the above referenced project. We recommend approval of the project with the following conditions. Number one, maintenance record for the whole property should be submitted before the end of October 2024. Two, the maintenance plan and maintenance contract for the porous pavement should be included, the cleaning and maintenance, not just inspections. Three, applicant should provide plans and details for the de-watering process before any digging. Any further information required, please advise.
Two o'clock, our hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed to run the siding? First call? Second call? Third call closed. And it's a beautiful building. It's really proud. And I know there's people that go down there and park once in a while, and they're doing something at a doctor's office, because I've seen it a few times when I was there. And YMCA has been very, very nice to the people that have to do any business around there, as long as they're not hogging it all day. Just go in the parking lot, spend how far they can afford you, so. Thank you, guys, for that. I'll be voting in favor.
In favor?
Same.
In favor.
Well, I agree.
Have a motion, please.
ZBA-2464 Kelly Engineering Group for special permit, FP, FPOD, to construct 11,295 square foot two-story addition on the existing structure on the premise numbered 79 Cardington Street, Quincy, Mass. I make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. On the motion, just one thing. You said there was 371 spaces. You took seven. Still got 370.
364.
378 it was. It was 378, and it was seven, right? But I think it's, the whole paper in here that I read, you lost six, correct?
Seven.
That said six in what I read. Okay, I just wanted to check it. Oh, my God. Let me
You voted yet.
Whoa. God, you, whoa, you're on top of it. That's, that's, talk about a clock. My God. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Now I'll get that down.
You have a motion adjourned?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Opposed?